Roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Here.
Supervisor Blazer.
Here.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Here.
Supervisor Fletcher.
Here.
Consent agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any comment from the public? Seeing no comment, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you. Special presentation. And from here, I think I'll move down to the floor with Assemblyman Gallagher and Senator Nielsen.
We are, uh, Governor Gallagher and I want to acknowledge, the College of the Senate. Resolution of the Land Service. And it has been a man for his law service, dedication to the community particularly in this county, and to the people of California. Thank you, sir.
Let me say a few words.
You can do that.
So it's, it's an honor for us to be able to recognize Randy Fletcher. Well, as you all know, dedicated public servant. You know, especially when I've been a county supervisor and having worked with Randy on, on many projects, you know, from water to wildfire. He's been a huge champion for the foothills and his district. Always looking, what I love about Randy is he always comes to me with ideas, and they're really good ideas. We've been all kind of strategize together and trying to find a path forward. He's always looking for, hey, how can we get this made where we can come together? And if any legislative or regulatory process work for us. So it's, it's really been an honor to work with him. He's really going to be a guest on this board. You know, serving as chairman this year. We're just, we're really blessed in this community to have you here. So we just want to recognize that and thank you for your service.
Quick comments. I tell you, it, it has been an honor to work with both of you. I can't imagine anybody better than what you both do for your position, your districts, and Yuba County. You have always been so supportive for the public, to everyone in your district, but particularly, again, Yuba County. I, I really look at this as a team, and you guys are great team players. You support this state. I, I don't know how to respect you more. You've done a great job. So thank you for this honor, and it certainly is. I'm overwhelmed with just the fact you're both here. So thank you. You've got a busy schedule. What else can I say? Thanks again.
Mr. Chairman, if I may take liberty for a moment. Since I'm reaching the end of my tenure. I want to thank you formally for the pleasure of serving this county for as many years as I've been able to do that. I'm writing off, not into the sunrise or sunset, but to the sunrise is what I tell everybody. But it's, it's now my turn to retire and spend more time with Maryland. But it's been a pleasure to serve this county and all of you over the years. And I want to thank you for the service that we've done together. It's been my pleasure, my honor to work with you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Comments from the board? Andy.
Randy has pretty much been said, but Senator Nielsen, thank you very much for everything you've done for us.
Very good. Thank you. Public communication.
Any person may speak about any subject of concern, provided is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes. And each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to comment, please use the raise hand function or star nine if participating on a phone. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. Through the chair, we have three requests to speak cards and no hands raised on Zoom. The first is Charles Sharp.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Good morning, county supervisors, Charles Sharp, Oregon House. I'm not sure how I can follow that act, but I will try. You have in your packet a copy of the North Yuba Water District's Fall Newsletter right here. Produced by Crystal Martin, featuring how much Mary Keferny and myself have cost the district in P R A cost. The intent is to sway the voters to vote for the opponent Gary Hawthorne by characterizing us as bad people for costing the district money. This newsletter was mass mailed to the district customers and voters and any overlapping fire district voters by public agency at the tax maker's expense. This is against the F P P C rules. In his sworn deposition, General Manner said when directors wanted something political put in the newsletter, they would communicate directly with Crystal. As the president of the district, Hawthorne is responsible for what the newsletter says. By being the president, Hawthorne approved of this effort to discredit his opponents using the resources of a public agency. The Yuba County Elections Department can carefully count the votes, but they cannot count how many voters were affected by this newsletter. This is election manipulation happening right here in real time, right across the hall over there. Hark! What do I hear? I hear, I, another tainted vote being counted, I believe. These elections are now compromised and corrupted. Voter fraud by the Yuba Water District right here, right now, in Yuba County. The burden of proof that the elections are fair falls upon the county gentleman. You have an election mess on your hands. You're going to say, no, 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 it's the water district's mess. We didn't do any, anything. We are innocent bystanders. Supervise, your supervisors, you're counting the votes. The district attorney is obligated to act on election fraud. This could be remedied if the Elections Department disqualified Hawthorne as a candidate because he broke the law. The problem would go away. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tommy Quarter.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Tom Quarter. I live in Olivehurst, and I'm here to remind you that for the last 67 years, my neighborhood is still not got any sidewalks, curbs, or gutters. I'm tired of playing fair. We've played fair for 67 years, and where are we at today? I got dirt in front of my house. Everybody has to park in a ditch. There are pictures which I provided to my supervisor where people just literally go and buy dirt. Fill in the ditch without it so much as a piece of PVC pipe and create a dam. And all I get is kickback. Oh, well, the water agency, you know, if it doesn't touch water, we can't, you know, provide for it. I got news for you. Curbs and gutters touch water. There is nothing that I see in the law requiring a sidewalk to be built when a curb or a gutter is built. So I urge you as members of the water agency and as supervisor board to allot the proper amount of money to either reconstruct the drainage system in Olivehurst to line grade hydraulic capacity. Or put in curbs and gutters like everybody else has. For 67 years, we're, we've been waiting and we're tired. It is no longer a matter of what's fair. It's our turn. So please allot the money to either restore the drainage system in Olivehurst to line grade hydraulic capacity. In other words, the ditches and the water will flow through them. Or install curbs and gutters. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tommy Farley.
Test, test, test. May is 25, from Yuba City, California, Serra County, Southview City. Here guard the digital law library in the front counter. Over by the counter, the digital library computer is not working, and I hope it will be fixed. It's a Dell here with Dell Tower with HP printer. It's a digital lot library computer. It's one for legal purposes only. And I thank, thank Randy Fletcher for retirement. I thank Andy for his service in Marine Corps and your kind shirt. I think Kevin for his service. Thank everybody for his service in Serra, Yuba Serra County, Yuba County too. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Moving on to county departments, item 536, Human Resources Approved Memorandum of Understanding with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. Adopt resolution amending classification system, basic salary hourly and extra help hourly schedule effective October the 1st, 2022.
Good morning, Chairman and Members of the Board. Jill Abel with the Human Resources Department. This morning, I'm happy to bring to you an agreement with the Deputy Sheriff's Association that would be effective October 1st of this year. And go through 2025. So this agreement was, it was very long-term negotiations with the DSA. And for that reason, this is effective October 1st, even though our contract ended on June 30. In this agreement, we have several things. The first is a cost of living adjustment. This cost of living adjustment, there is a slight typo in the staff report that says effective 9-1. It's actually effective 10-1, and all of the, you know, attached documents do show that. And this is the same cost of living adjustment that was given to all other groups within the county. That is a 5% effective 10-1, and then between 1.5 to 2.5% based on the California Consumer Price Index Urban for the two following years. In addition to that, we have three equity adjustments for two classifications. Effective October 1st also, we have 2% for the, the deputy sheriffs and 2, 3% for the DA investigators. And we would be doing that, the same thing in the two following years of the contract. And those are the only two classifications that would be receiving equity adjustments within the term of this contract. In addition to this, you'll see a lot of the other same terms that we have agreed to with other groups. There is an availability to convert some vacation to deferred comp within the term of the contract. There is also the addition of a 10-year longevity step to, for employees hired after July 1 of 2013. We have also made a slight change to education and post incentives. Those are now stackable, but only in one category. Only, you can only receive both things in one category. We also have done something that is a little bit different, for the first time in Yuba County. We have done a holiday, holiday in loop pay. So, and we've converted or basically estimated what the cost of providing paid holidays is to this group. And instead of that, we're providing that as a, a wage line item. And then because the Deputy Sheriff's Association is generally working on holidays, just like any other day of the week. Then we won't have the scheduling issues around, around holidays any longer. So they'll just receive the pay and they'll work those days and request vacation if they want to take them off. So other than that, we've got some other miscellaneous items, but health insurance, for example, is the same contribution as we've reached for other, other groups. And I am happy to answer any questions you have about the term of the contract. I know there's been a lot of discussion about this.
Questions from the board? Do I hear a motion from the board?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Comments from the public? I see no comments from the public. Let's do a roll call vote on this.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Fletcher.
Yes. And the message to the Sheriff's Department, we are very supportive to public service and public safety. Let me tell you, your role is huge. So anything we can do, I think we're here to support that. And hopefully this will get us through three years. So thank you for getting this done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 544, approve amendment to item number one of the county council's employment agreement.
Yes, good morning, Chair, Members of the Board, Devin Mallon, Yuba County Administrator. So what we're talking about today is our county council's employment agreement and modifying the term for that employment agreement. It originated as a four-year term with an ending date of March 12th of next year. And the request before you today is to amend it, so the termination date would be July 31st of next year. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions from the board?
Can we make it 2024 on that first date?
Yeah, I, that's up for negotiation, right?
Since Michael's not here, we could just fill in the date we'd like. How's that? Would work and he wouldn't know it. So back to the board.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Any comment from the public? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number 538, 2022. Adopt resolution to support the Operation Green Light during the week of November the 7th through Veterans Day, November the 13th.
Good morning, Board. Premender Baines with Admin Services. I'm requesting that the Board adopt the task resolution in Operation Green Light for veterans. Every year we get together as a nation on Veterans Day to celebrate and honor our, our veterans that served our country. We all know that they deserve gratitude, respect, and support for risking their lives, for protecting our country, and our values of life. Operation Green Light for veterans is an initiative designed to shine the light on the service of our veterans and their families. By adopting the resolution, Operation Green Light. We'd be illuminating green, our government center, our Packer facility, and our courthouse. The week of November 7th through November 13th. We also are encouraging our community, our businesses and residents to eliminate their houses and businesses green to support our veterans. We are requesting the Board adopt the task resolution so we can participate in Operation Green Light. Thank you for your consideration. And if there's any questions?
Questions from the board?
No. No, no questions, just a comment I wanted to, through the chair, thank, thank staff for your work on this. I was definitely excited when I saw that Naco was championing this. I think it's an amazing opportunity for both the county as well as our citizens to recognize the sacrifice of our veterans. And I'm excited that we're participating.
Well, is the only veteran I'll move to approve.
I have a first and a second. Certainly have a comment. Would you like to make a comment?
Morning, Board. My name's Tom Quarter, 20-year veteran, retiree from the United States Air Force. And while I commend this honor here, I would like to make a mention that many veterans who call our Veteran Service Office today are greeted with this greeting. Welcome to Health and Human Services. And this was brought up when this switch over change occurred. We went from a full tri-color pamphlet explaining the services that were offered by the county, paid for by taxpayer dollars throughout the veterans. And yet, Health and Human Services Director decided without consultation of the people who work in the office or us veterans as to how we're greeted there. That's a very big slight, okay? We're veterans. We're not people who are receiving benefits from Health and Human Services. And it may be that either the Veteran Service Office needs to be changed under a different department. Or that that department director needs to be spoken to and, and asked why these changes were taking place without our knowledge or input. So thank you very much for this honor if you do approve it. But remember, when I call them up, I'm not expecting to receive a, a response to my inquiry by saying, hi, welcome to Health and Human Services. Okay? I'm a veteran. That's who I'm calling, and that's who 99% of the veterans in this county expect to hear on the other end of the telephone. So with that in mind, please, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 548, 2022, Community Development Services Receive Quarterly Development Update.
On your screens? Wonderful. Thank you.
Talk to the mic.
Yes. Good morning, Chairman Fletcher and Members of the Board. Rachel Downs, I am your Business Engagement Manager coming out of Community Development.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have the pleasure of presenting on behalf of our department this morning, our Quarterly Development Update. It's a compilation of projects from our planning, building, environmental health, public works, and Yuba County Airport. This quarter, we'd like to highlight the private development and public investments creating a tremendous amount of momentum in the community of Linda. I'm going to actually hand it over to start us off to Mike Lee, our Community Development Director, to share some project specifics.
Morning, Mr. Chair, fellow board members. Mike Lee with Community Development. So this is an exciting time for Yuba County. The, the Feather River Center, Center is a roughly 40-acre site that's ideally located for a power center. Unfortunately, for the last 35 years, we've had an underutilized, an outdated building on, on the property. As we all know, part of it burned down, and this last several months, they've been demolishing about 320,000 square feet of, of building. Last, I, I think the demolition is essentially done. There's a big pile of, of recycled concrete out there right now. But the, it's basically cleared a clean slate. Click to the next one. And with that clean slate, this is not new news, but it's semi, or more official, because this, over this past quarter, Costco officially submitted their building permit applications for a retail center as well as a fueling facility. Their intent is to secure the land by November. They're, they're still in, in contract. Once the building permits are issued, then they will, they'll, they'll close escrow on that. So again, that's not new news. I think people kind of knew or heard about it already, but we wanted to officially report it now that they've made that submittal. Also like to hit on the focus of that corridor, you know, for, for staff as well as the county at, at large. We, let's see, in May, I believe it was, we, we sent a county administrator's office and community development office prepared a letter that we sent to the land, the property owners of the Feather River Center. Basically, just letting them know the interest in the corridor here in, in the county. And making commitments on, on some actions and activities that we were going to do in that regard. And oftentimes people think government's slow and things take forever. Well, I'll say that here at Yuba County, we are quite nimble. And can accomplish a lot in a short, a short amount of time. Within that letter, that we committed to essentially five different tasks. And I'm happy to say that we, in the last few months, have, have made good progress on all of them already. So the first one was the complete street improvements. Similar to what was done on the other portions of North Beale. We're going to focus on, you know, Lindhurst and the piece of North Beale that approaches, on the north end, that approaches Highway 70. With similar complete street improvements. We are, have begun preparing the application. Secog is doing a call for projects this fall. And so we are going to be submitting the application for the design phase for the whole corridor. And I, I'm fairly confident we will be successful in getting funding for that. We can't ask for construction money yet because they won't grant that until they know you're further along in the process. So we got to focus on the design portion right now. Secondly, we, the, the drainage at the Feather River Center, as well as that corridor, is, is a little lacking and undersized. And so we've been pursuing a storm drain improvement project. And within a few months' time, we actually designed the project. Went out to bid, and the contract's been awarded, and they will start construction any day now. So that, that's exciting. That'll, you know, when we do the, the rest of the street improvements, we'll have the, the storm drain already in place that can accommodate all, all the, the stormwater flows. Another, in the letter, another task we identified was the Business Facade Grant Program. That has been approved by your board. We've gone out and hit the streets and solicited, you know, property owners and tenants. We've, I think we have about, what, six to eight applications already? So we're, we're well underway. I don't think, they haven't actually done the work yet, but we are getting the applications in and, and getting them, getting them approved as appropriate. Another commitment we made was to submit a C D B G application for code enforcement work and, and public works cleanup work along that corridor. That application has been submitted. We're seeking, actually, we originally identified about 500,000, but we're submitting it in, in the 700,000 range. And in that, in the code enforcement light, also, we have prioritized that corridor, and the staff is out there every day. It's, it's an ongoing thing, as we all know. It's, it's an ongoing thing, as we all know. But there, we're hitting that corridor daily, making sure we can do all we can to, to, you know, face, give it a facelift and keep it, keep it looking nice. Also, in that regard, there was a couple, on the north end of North Beale there, there's a couple blighted properties, one of which we were actually able to secure and, and then, and demolish the, the old buildings, the old bait and tackle shop. And then across the street, there's a, a boat storage yard that they were using without appropriate permits. So we've been hitting that property as well, and, and most of the boats have, have been removed. I think there's still a few remaining, but we'll continue on, on that cleanup. So again, we're hitting it hard. And we, we made the commitment to the property owner out there. And we, you know, knowing this is the ideal power center location, and we're, you know, a few years' time, I think you're going to see a, a significant improvement in the look out there with the, with the complete street improvements. And then, once the Costco goes in, there's going to be multiple parcels around on, on the same property that, you know, there'll likely be restaurants and, but none, none of those want to sign up until Costco's officially signed, you know, or till they officially get their permit and secure the, the land. Then soon as that happens, you'll see a bunch of other, other commercial businesses sign on. So, super exciting time. And I think in a, like I said, in a few years' time, because we won't, won't recognize it out there. And with that, I'll, I'll pass it back to Rachel.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mike. It's truly a great time to be doing business in Yuba County. And I'd also like to share with you a few other updates from our other departments and projects occurring throughout the county. So through our Planning Department, we have received an application to redevelop the abandoned car wash on North Beale Road, plus the conversion of a residential home into a preschool in Olafirst, which is a tremendous win. As many of you know, childcare for our working families is in high demand. Additionally, the Development Review Committee approved SEQA for the Yuba Roadside Fuel Treatment Project. There we are. And the approval of a 328-unit single-family residential subdivision in Plumas Lake called Feather Glen South, plus the final recreditation of a 71-unit single-family residential subdivision in Plumas, sorry, called Plumas Ranch Village. That one's a tongue twister. In your package, you'll also find a few other attachments for projects noted in the report. And moving over to our Building Department, I want to acknowledge the staff and leadership who implemented a new land management system earlier this quarter. This software is the backbone of community development, tracking land use entitlements, building permits, and encapsulating a tremendous amount of information. So, big kudos to all those that were involved. I know that was a heavy lift and a big act of teamwork. Not only have we created a much more user-friendly web portal for residents and developers to access permit information, but we've modernized numerous processes within the department as well. In addition to that major undertaking, our team miraculously managed to also issue 786 building permits this quarter. While the total number of production homes dipped in the third calendar quarter of this year compared to earlier months this year, we did, however, finalize more homes in year to date, so up to September 30th, than we did in the years of 2021, 2020, and 2019. So that totals 442 new production homes finalized to date this year, September 30th to date. I should be accurate. In regard to specific building permits, Mike already covered the new 152,217 square foot Costco wholesale warehouse and the adjacent fuel station, and the demolition of two abandoned structures on North Beale Road. But we've also received application or issued permits for a car wash, Jamba Juice, Pizza Hut, and Tesla charging stations in Plumas Lake, a major remodel and expansion of the Nordic Industries Office in Olafirst, and a change of tenant application for Izzy's Mexican Restaurant on North Beale Road. Your video's not playing. Hmm, okay. Under the Cedar Lane Affordable Housing Project, we anticipate them welcoming new residents as early as January or February of 2023. There is an image here. I apologize for whatever reason it didn't load in the presentation.
That's too bad. That's a very effective picture.
Yes, it is. And I will make sure that this is available to all, not only board and public on yes2uba.com under our Developing tab later, and you'll be able to see the image there. The construction of the new airport taxiway concluded on time and under budget. And just announced, our Yuba County Library located in downtown Marysville will receive $6 million from California State Library grant funding for major improvements, including new group study rooms, research room, updates to the California room, a new children's area, and better broadband and Wi-Fi services, just to name a few. Right. And from our Environmental Health Department, in partnership with Olafirst Public Utilities District, has made significant progress toward expanding the water and wastewater services in Olafirst. If you will remember in our last presentation, Clark Pecel, our Director of Environmental Health, provided a robust update on this project. This quarter, the public engagement was well received. Therefore, we are moving into Phase Two, followed by an application for funding to provide engineering and planning for the future construction phases. Here's-
Did you cover the fact that they're funding up to 185,000 per home on the water?
Yes.
Sewer connections?
Yes.
I didn't hear.
There's a map of the project. I apologize, Supervisor Vasquez, yes, to be more accurate. That is in the slide there. I didn't verbally call that out, but yes.
Important thing is no out-of-pocket costs for property owners.
Yes, that is accurate. All right, moving over to our Public Works Department, they have also been hard at work. In addition to the rapid design and soon-to-begin construction of the Feather River and North Beale Road drainage project that Mike mentioned earlier, they have also broke ground in Olafirst on McGowan Parkway. This project will include curb, gutters, sidewalks, and an expanded roadway. But perhaps most interestingly, will install the first leg of a wastewater main, expanding OPUD services further into the South County. And lastly, our Yuba County Airport team has increased the total number of operational aircraft in leased hangars and returned the previous Coca-Cola building to county ownership. But probably the most popular airport development this quarter is a project called The Hangar. In the true Yes to Yuba spirit, we are exploring a potential partnership with a site developer to make this pop-up food truck park potentially a more permanent fixture, not only providing scrumptious lunches to approximately plus or minus 500 employees in the nearby industrial parks, but a fun community environment for the entire family. From lumpia, hot dogs, tacos, hot wings, and even Malaysian cuisine, the park is currently open from 10 to 7 and has even caught the attention of the pilot community flying in from all over the region just for a quick bite at lunch. That concludes our quarterly update. But as always, I'd like to thank and recognize the numerous staff that make these projects possible. With your leadership and their hard work, we are truly making Yuba County a great place to do business. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good presentation.
Questions from the board?
Do the chair just, just a couple comments? Thank you, Rachel. Thank you to all our staff. I love these reports. It's amazing to hear all the great things that are going on in our community, and it's exciting to, to just see all those wonderful things. So with respect to the food truck park specifically, I was able to go there for lunch yesterday, and I definitely highly recommend it. It was a great experience, so, and I look forward to going back and going for dinner sometime, too.
I just want to say thanks to everybody involved with Yes to Yuba. These quarterly reports are really valuable to us, I think, and some of the other supervisors, you know, for communicating progress to the constituents. So, thanks again.
A pleasure.
And I'd like to thank you for a project that's not really known elsewhere in the United States. I think we're one of the few people doing this, and the response has been very positive and overwhelming from the businesses. So, thank you.
Our pleasure. I believe a recent quote was, "The more complex the problem, the more creative brains it takes to solve it." And so, again, accolades to our entire department. We are many, but we are also one. So we appreciate the leadership, and then I appreciate all that are working on these projects daily. Thank you.
So, Rachel, don't leave yet.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, this doesn't just happen. It happens with the right team doing the right things. You have a picture on the very front here, and, and I'm hoping that everyone is actually here in the audience. Could you ask each one of them to stand up? I, I tell you, the recognition they need for what they do, the attitude they carry, and, and it's really about attitude. How do we accomplish things in the real world? And Yuba County is able to do that with the right people. Could you please acknowledge who's out here?
Yes, I will. So I'm going to go from one side to the other. It is quite convenient. We have numerous of our CDSA leaders in the, the room with us. So we have Jeremy String from our Building Department and Code Enforcement.
Just keep standing up. Just stay up, please.
You can blame it on him and not me. I believe Clark Pecel is back at the department. So we do have Clark Pecel from our Environmental Health Department, Mike Lee, our fearless leader of Community Development, and Kevin Perkins, Assistant Director of Community Development, Dan Peterson, Director of Public Works. And then I'm also going to call out Jason Kopping, our Yuba County Airport Manager. And then who's also not in the room, but likely online, is Melanie Marquez from Finance and Admin in CDSA as well. And she is absolutely part of the team as well as her staff.
And the board wants to thank you for what you do. So we really appreciate it. We pay attention. The public pays attention, and your results are amazing. So keep that up.
And I'm going to make Dave Maddox with our Building Department stand up, too. He thought he was going to get away with it, Dave. Thank you, guys.
Very good.
Thank you.
Now you're excused. Thank you for the presentation. Ordinants and public hearings.
If you challenge in court the action or decision of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use, or environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
Okay, item number 543, 2022, hold public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 10.05, Building Standards, Construction Codes, the Yuba County Ordinance Code.
Good morning, members of the board.
Good morning.
Dave Maddox, Assistant Building Department Manager with Community Development. The agenda item before you today is the ordinance amending Chapter 10.05, the Yuba County Ordinance Code. The California Building Standards Commission adopts construction standards throughout the state of California on a triennial basis. Our current 2019 California Building Standards Code will be replaced with the 2022 Code and become effective January 1st, 2023. These proposed amendments to Chapter 10.05 do not conflict or modify the currently adopted standards. They're just merely to provide consistency between our county ordinance code and the updates provided in the new 2022 Code. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Questions from the board? I think we have 30 minutes for this. Can't you just elaborate a little more? I'm only kidding, that's okay.
We really lucked out this, this code cycle. We've, we've, we've had some major code increases requirements in the last few years, such as fire sprinklers and solar mandates. And luckily, I'm, I'm excited to announce that this new code cycle seems to be fairly uneventful, so I'm, I'm excited.
Okay, any questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Any comments from the public? Seeing no, none, I will close the public hearing. Back to the board.
I'll second.
Who is our first?
Supervisor Vasquez.
Thank you. We have a roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 557, Community Development, hold the public hearing, waive the second reading, and repeal and reenact ordinance code title X, Chapter 10.30, in its entirety to address recent updates to the National Flood Insurance Program.
Good morning, Chairman Fletcher, members of the board. Dan Peterson, Director of Public Works. This is the second appearance for this ordinance revision. This is for our floodplain management ordinance. Congress and FEMA updated Dakota Federal Regulations and updated the requirements for what has to be in a local floodplain management ordinance. So we've included two new definitions, one for development elevation, and then we also added some clarifying language on the protection of electrical and mechanical equipment under the construction code portion of the floodplain management ordinance.
Questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Comments, questions from the public? I'll close the public hearing. Back to the board.
I'll move to proof.
I have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez? Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Correspondents? I think we only have one item on the correspondence. Correct from Fish and Wildlife? Okay. Board and staff, Andy?
Last week on Wednesday, and Thursday, was down for the Calafco program. It was interesting for, for a number of reasons, but the SB 938, which is a municipal service review, and it's going to make a difference, I think, in our county. And consolidation of fire districts was a subject there, and I'd like to thank Marysville City Council for agreeing to look into that and hopefully join up with Linda Fire Department. It's only logical. And hopefully, we'll get some other departments to also consider one fire department. But that's it.
Great. Done.
Last Saturday was the rededication of the Arboga Assembly Center, which was a, an assembly center for Japanese-Americans that were displaced and sent to, to basically concentration camps. But it was a temporary assembly area. It's down on Broadway and, and near Arboga and Feather River Boulevard. If you haven't had a chance to see it, you should go. It's open 24/7. This was a really joint effort with the Arts Council, Marysville Joint Unified School. Stuart Gilchrist was the basic designer. Dan Turner created all the very large metal displays. Sue Moyers is, I'd say she's our unofficial county historian. So she worked very hard collecting all the photos and the, and the background information of these detainees. There was approximately 2,500 that were gathered up and assembled there and held for about roughly six weeks and then sent on to the detain, the detention camps, mainly Tulley Lake up north. So if you get a chance, you really should go by and check it out. There was, it was very well done. There was a nice turnout. There was probably over 100 people, speeches, et cetera. Thanks.
To the chair, I, I object to the use of the word concentration camp.
Yeah, that's a, that's a touchy subject.
It's a relocation camp. There was no executions at that camp.
That's true. It was, they were, it was a detention.
Words mean things.
Very good. Seth?
Last week, we, I attended the Orville Dam Advisory Committee. It's a regional group. We talk about improvements that can be done because of the issue that occurred in 18 or 17 with the spill- We talk about improvements that can be done because of the issue that occurred in 18 or 17 with the spillway and our evacuation. That group can allow designations by the electeds for people to attend. So, we're hoping that we can have Oscar Marin attend those, since it would make sense as Office of Emergency Services. I think that would be a good fit. Another meeting I attended last week was the school safety in regards to the events that happened at Lindhurst. And I was impressed by the superintendent's viewpoint of having the community own the schools. It's really going to be something to try and create that engagement that I think schools may have lost with the parental community over the last couple of years and try and return that relationship back around. So, good style of leadership on that. I attended the lunch pod at the airport last week, it was good. Although, I have to mention, in addition to the exotic foods you can sample there, we also have Irma jeans where I had Oxtel yesterday in Olivehurst. So, for all your exotic food needs, we have a variety of things in Olivehurst that you guys should come out and sample. And then, they have chitlins. I imagine you can get some possum. And then, as far as coming up, the REST luau, which is a fundraiser for our REST organization, which does a great winter shelter for those in need, will be happening on the 5th. And I believe that's gonna be happening at Adventure Church, if you guys would like to go to that charity event.
Very good. Gary?
Really just want to echo what was shared by Supervisor Vasquez and Blazer. I was also at the LaFco Conference, Cal LaFco Conference, and I learned there that LaFco really has a proactive role in the consolidation of special districts and ensuring that special districts and cities, the boundaries are designed in such a way that services are provided to the public as efficiently and sufficiently as possible. And so, I look forward to, with my role through LaFco, kind of helping do that in Yuba County and make sure that we're serving our residents through our special districts the best that we can and making the best use of their tax dollars. So, that was very exciting. And then, I was also at the Arboga Assembly Center rededication as well, and it's an amazing site. So, I would echo Supervisor Blazer's request that if, in suggestion, if you have not been out there to that site, you should go out and walk around and check it out. So, this would be a good time of year, it's not hot, it's not raining, so either now or the spring, probably, so.
Very good. Thank you. Kevin?
All right, just briefly, I wanted to update the board on a project that's been a joint effort between the county, Oliver's Public Utility District, City of Wheatland, Yuba Water Agency. And that's that South County sewer expansion project, kind of linking up the city of Wheatland with Oliver's Public Utility District Sewer Treatment Plant, and then also opening up sewer availability in our Sports Entertainment Zone, Employment Village area. So, there was an exciting development a few months back where it looks like we're gonna have an opportunity for the state to be able to fund a large portion of that through a grant process. And the grant application is due here in December. So, the Yuba Water Agency has secured a consultant to help the team put together this grant application. And it's really focused on serving disadvantaged communities, which City of Wheatland and Oliver's both qualify under. So, that's the great news, you know, and we're putting all that together. But the serving of additional capacity in that sewer line for the Sports Entertainment Zone and Employment Village would not be grant-eligible. So, now, we're kind of wrangling with what is that portion of the cost? And who would be the funder of that? And so, there's kind of robust discussion on that topic right now. And I just wanted to make sure the board was aware. I'm working closely with Community Development on kind of putting together who's benefiting and what would be their portion of the costs, and really needing to engage some of the property owners out there to see what their level of interest is, specifically the tribe. You know, that there's an interest in being able to develop the sports entertainment area, and that's going to need a connection to this line. Right now, the casino and the amphitheater are both sustained on their own little packaged sewer treatment plants, and that's long-term, they need to be hooked up to, you know, a regional facility. So, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of those efforts going on. And one of the topics that came up in our discussion yesterday is, and it would come back, obviously, I'd be engaging the board here before the application's due in December, is there going to need to be any level of commitment from the county specifically on funds that would be, you know, like a local share? And so, that's not currently in our county budget, so that's something that we'd have to discuss. What is in our county budget, what's been committed to date, is the $2 million in ARPA funds that the county is contributing to a portion of this line that's being built currently on McGowan Parkway. It's that's where we have our Safe Process Schools project, we're improving McGowan Parkway with curb gutter sidewalks. And since that project is being constructed currently and ahead of the sewer project, we wanted to put the sewer line in the road so we don't tear up the road in the future. And so, that's where the board made the commitment of ARPA funds to build at least that portion of the sewer line. But that's been our level of commitment to date, and whether or not we need to expand it, to be determined. But I wanted to put that on the board's radar. The other thing on the board's radar is, it seems to be conference season, so the County Administrators Association of California has their first conference, you know, kind of post-pandemic. I believe they haven't had one since 2019. And that kicks off on Wednesday through Friday, so I'll be attending that.
This week?
This week. Yep, and that's all I have.
Very good.
Yes, so it'll either be at your November meeting or December meeting if there needs to be an adjustment to the county's commitment to that project financially.
Through the chair. Also related to the sewer project, the money that we have committed to the McGowan portion, do we anticipate that that portion will be, assuming we receive the grant, that that portion will be reimbursable by the grant and then could be available for use elsewhere? Or we do not know that?
The grant would not reimburse, but it would be counted towards our, I guess it would be credited towards, that's probably been part of the discussion, is can we credit that $2 million towards an investment of expansion? Or do we kind of, or does that investment get kind of lost in the existing capacity issue? So, we're kind of working through that, since we're making that investment prior to the grant application.
Gotcha. And then, one other item I had on my list, sorry, Chair, that I forgot to mention is, public mentioned some concerns about the Law Library computer here in the Government Center, so if we could have staff look into that.
Yes, thank you for that. I have a note to follow up, and I believe at County Council's office, you have somebody that's part of the Law Library group, so we'll follow up on that.
Through the chair. In regards to public comment, I believe Mr. McWhorter brought up the need for that infrastructure of water drainage in Olivehurst. And so, if we're going to be spending money, millions of dollars, to provide more services to South County, perhaps we could spend some money to provide services to those already in the county that are in need. And I would love to see that allocation occur.
Thank you, if I could, through the chair. And it's something that could be a follow-up, maybe in our next quarterly report from Community Development, is a little bit more of a discussion about the investment that has been made to improve conditions in Olivehurst and Linda in regards to drainage, as well as curb gutter sidewalk, and then what's on the horizon. So, if the board is, if that's acceptable, that's something that we can task Community Development with at the next quarterly update.
So, that grant, I believe, is for part of West Linda, and it's gonna cover about three to four miles of it. But there's obviously 20 more miles and much of it in Olivehurst.
I understand, that, you know, that allows us to move the projects up in the current plan, so, you know. Patience is virtue.
If I could, through the chair, it is a notable mention. If, Dan Peterson, if you want to come up and give the board maybe some good news on what the news we received on Friday. But it is, there's a lot of effort dedicated towards improving conditions in Linda and Olivehurst. And so, Dan has been a champion of seeking out state and federal funds to improve the conditions down there.
Oh, good morning, once again, Dan Peterson, Director of Public Works, Supervisor Fletcher, and members of the board. This is one of those opportunities where I got really excited, very emotional. For the, we entered the big leagues this time. We went up against the major cities of California, went toe-to-toe with them, and we won. Or at least, staff or the CTC has recommended that we win a $22 million grant to do infrastructure work in the community of West Linda. This is unprecedented. Yuba County actually submitted applications for three massive projects. Yuba Water Agency graciously fronted the local cost share in order to result in the highest possible scores because the percentage of local cost share affects your total score when the state reviews your applications. So, the Yuba Water Agency had committed up to 20% of every one of the three projects. Each one of these three projects was roughly $27 million. The West Linda project ultimately was recommended by CTC staff to receive that funding. I anticipate we will have a funded, executed contract with the state by next spring. We'll go straight into design, and we'll probably be going to construction in three to four years. Unfortunately, our own project bumped out Olivehurst. Olivehurst almost made the cut, the cut was a score of 89, and I believe that Olivehurst got an 88. So, we just missed the cutoff, and quite bluntly, if we had not got West Linda, I suspect we would have received Olivehurst. But the state only had limited funding. They had $340 million, and we got $22 million of it, as did City of Sacramento, as did County of Sacramento. SECOG region really took the lion's share of this grant under the ATP, the Active Transportation Program. So, what does this mean? This means that we are going to be putting in the backbone infrastructure for the first truly comprehensive storm drain system in West Linda. We're talking about Arboga, Alicia, Grand, Cottonwood, and then there's two other streets. And I apologize, I can't even remember the names of them. Oh, and Feather River Boulevard, from the intersection with Alicia over to Cottonwood. So, extremely important project for us. And oh, by the way, we also are putting in sidewalks and bicycle lanes while we're at it, and repaving the roads. What does this mean in the future? Well, in the future, that means that Olivehurst project will probably be the next massive project in line. There are grant opportunities out there, I've never seen anything like it before. I've reported to the board about this, I've been in this game for 40 years now. I've never seen a cycle like this where there's this much federal money being offered. So, the Olivehurst project, as we are fond of doing, will be repackaged under different grant opportunities and aggressively pursued as well. As the board probably knows, a few years ago, we received a grant to do a climate change vulnerability analysis, which is a very fancy way of saying an updated master drainage plan, which is now virtually complete. The next phase of that will be to go back, take the information derived from that vulnerability analysis and actually start putting together a capital improvement program for drainage. And we start at West Linda, and we work our way south. And so, that means that Olivehurst is going to be next. And then, after that, we're going to be looking at Arboga and ultimately tying into RD 784 and across Plumas Lake Drainage System as well. So, we are really, we've really been active in the drainage area for the past few years. Ironically, we've been using the Active Transportation Program to fund a lot of our drainage improvements because we cannot put in sidewalks and bicycle lanes if we have open ditches. So, in order to promote active transportation, we got to put in a storm drain system. And I think we've done six active transportation projects in the past six years, which is amazing as well. So, we're extremely excited, we're not backing off the throttle, we're going to continue pushing to get these programs through.
Through the chair. In regards to the climate change study that's virtually done, and the work that's gonna be being done in West Linda, and in regards to Mr. McWhorter's question about the hydraulic line capacity drainage system, what would the timetable be, even if we don't get more grants to do sidewalks and active transportation? But we do want to take care of the stormwater drainage issue, what would the timetable be to implement that based on the study that's being completed?
Unfortunately, everything boils down to money and funding sources. There are no funding sources for these massive capital improvements other than developer fees at the time a development is built. And then, I have to go after grants to retrofit an existing development. In the case of Olivehurst, West Linda, portions of Arboga, the subdivisions have already been built, so I have to go after the grants. I've been targeting the ATP program very heavily, and we've been very successful at that. Also, the Local Partnership Program, we're targeting that one as well. Currently, are preparing an application under the LPP Competitive Program for the third phase of Northbeal Road. And under the LPP Formulaic Program, we'll be looking at the Lindhurst Avenue Complete Streets Project that Mike Lee mentioned earlier. But in terms of your question, if we were to go back and try to reestablish hydraulic line grade and capacity for all of the original roadside ditches in Olivehurst, you're talking several million dollars, probably in the order of magnitude, well over $10 million. You're probably looking at a two- or three-year project to get it done. I bounced it off of a couple other folks, and the feeling was that it probably is not the best time to promote that as a standalone project, as an interim project, if there's opportunities out there that I could get funding to actually put in a storm drain system. Because reestablishing the hydraulic line grade and capacity of ditches is not going to solve the long-term issue that we don't necessarily have the connections to a downstream discharge point. So, what happens is, most of these roadside ditches in West Linda and Olivehurst tend to work more as infiltration trenches than they do as a natural conveyance facility. Unfortunately, the farther south you go, the more clay is in the soil. The community of West Linda is very sandy soil, it actually used to be the old riverbed for the Yuba River, so it infiltrates fairly well. That's the only reason that West Linda isn't underwater every time it rains. Olivehurst has a lot more clay in it, it does not infiltrate as well, and you have a number of ponding issues in Olivehurst that you don't see in West Linda. That's unfortunate, but the best way to correct that is to use a storm drain as opposed to an open roadside ditch. And that's where we get into the catch-22. I'd love to do an intermediate project to clean up the ditches, and our road crews are out there every year trying to do that, you know, with their limited resources. But to really do that, it's going to cost millions and millions of dollars. And the question then becomes, is that money better spent pursuing a true ultimate solution, which is going to be a storm drain system?
Dan, you might touch on the total dollars on that grant that you're talking about, that you're just picking up. What was the dollar on that grant?
Well, the Yuba Water Agency, as I mentioned previously, committed 20%, or up to 20%, so it's close to $5 million from the Yuba Water Agency. And then, the CTC recommendation is for close to $22 million. So, we're talking a total project cost of $27 million.
So, out of all of this, I'll tell you what I see as really important. What the public doesn't always quite understand is the volume of work that needs to be done and the limited amount of dollars to get there. We are very fortunate to have the Water Agency and a board that's really supportive to the county that has to stay within certain guidelines and parameters. I guess I would encourage the district supervisor that really needs to meet with small groups of the public in their district to help them understand the process and the gains that have been made most recently. This is a long-term project, and I think we've all looked at it in long-term pieces. We appreciate the fact that you're continuing to look for dollars, and it's those big chunks of grants that make a big difference. And with the support of the Water Agency and the limited budget within the county, we've been able to accomplish what looks like, in this case, a really exciting project. But if you took a look across this entire county, to put us in the 21st century, there are hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars that need to come to the table, and we just don't have those kinds of dollars to do that. But you can take on pieces at a time, and that's what I see as happening, and that's very exciting. The fact that we're moving forward, you can't do it all at once, but you can do pieces at a time. And with support of staff, state, federal, and the Water Agency and the limited budget within the county, I don't know how much- Water Agency and the limited budget within the county, I don't know how much more we can expect. We don't print money, but there's a lot to be done in our communities. So each district working with those individuals that would like to know, well, what are you doing? And why aren't you getting this done now? We want it done now. We're doing what we can with the resources we have. And that's just an important educational process that has to be shared with the public.
Through the chair. These large grants, when we get these, these also allow that funds that previously were committed in projects in those areas to be used elsewhere, don't they?
It depends on the grant program as to whether or not you can do that.
Depends, but by and large it.
But it definitely does free up resources to reallocate.
So our existing timeline is actually going to be shorter than.
This massive grant, just to put in perspective, up until now, a typical grant that I would go after would be in the $3 to $5 million range. Those are big ones. $27 million, you know, this is unbelievable. We've just done, we've just took an eight year jump. So that's one of the reasons that I'm so excited because we've literally shaved eight years off of what I thought was going to be my capital improvement program schedule.
We're on a very good track. There's no doubt about it. So thank you for the update.
Thank you.
So it sounds like an engaging topic here. So we'll definitely loop that in with the next quarterly update so that the board can hear about progress being made on that, on the drainage and curb gutter sidewalk improvements in the Lynn to Olivehurst area.
That's great. Joe?
You know, I really want to point out because you're on the board today, we have no closed session. Now, if this is your future of showing up on the board and there's no closed sessions, wow, I think that's quite exciting in itself. I'm pleased. I think the whole board is pleased. So one of the items to follow with the discussion we just had, what you find in government is there is a long term, slow process to get things done. I can tell you about four years ago, there was discussion of broadband. Am I correct? Goes back quite a ways. Really critical that we provide some broadband. And to get the broadband, we need somebody to focus on the broadband. So within departments, we created that individual. That created the opportunity to look for grants and funding and focus on broadband. So just the other day, and I'll bring it to the attention of the public, we received a notice from Michelle King, who is from local agency technical assistant grant program that Yuba County was awarded with the assistance and focus of Ian Scott, that we will be having a study in the foothills for broadband. Do you realize the time, energy, but the success in that process? All takes time. The future for the foothills, it's the first step. We won't have it next year, but we're in the process of making that happen. I can't acknowledge how pleased I am with Ian Scott to really focus and get these things done. It puts us on the radar for other agencies, grant monies. We're building that road and the bridge from the valley to the foothills. We also are working in the valley to accomplish. And that is coming to pass. It will happen. So I'm telling you, what I see is nothing but positive from Yuba County. We are doing the right thing. Staff is doing the right things. And I am so pleased of where we're at in this whole cycle. Okay. Anything from Mary? Great. By the way, everything worked well. The internet zoom, it sounds, wow, it's all good stuff. I think, having said that, this meeting is adjourned.
Yubasutter.lives, local government live streams are presented by Plumus Lake Self-Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in person and personalized, instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings, strings for instruments, and a myriad of music and sound equipment. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe.